Hello.
Are you ready, Jimmy?
I'm ready for Mary Rita National Airport. The new installation is good. Good to go.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. Mr. Brand, can you carry at least with the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Such records reflect all members are present this evening. Mr. Haley is calling in by phone. Any agenda adjustments, Dr. Stewart?
There are none.
Personnel, student achievement recognitions?
There are none this evening.
Student discipline?
No.
Academics?
Yes. Ms. Sabatelli?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so we, I'm gonna start this by saying something. Students should complete the I-Rod, I-Ready diagnostics for the beginning of the year. Now, like Dr. Stewart said earlier, this test is from what they figured out or what they learned from last year. So this is not their new stuff. So the yellow isn't a bad thing right now. Now, when we get to the middle of the year, end of the year, that's when we need to really start looking at that stuff. So, um, at Jay Lou for reading, a lot of the concern now, we have eight percent or three grade levels are below, and we have sixteen percent at two grade levels or below. So at fifty-four percent, one grade level or below, that's pretty typical for this time of year. So that's not too bad. But then we want to celebrate that sixteen percent is in the early grade level. Um, Leading Creek, we have ten percent at three grade levels or below, and eighteen percent at two grade levels or below. But we want to celebrate that fifty-four percent that is one grade level or below because they obviously have one of those standards. But they also have thirteen percent that are early on in their grade level, which is really good. Um, Peterson Central, we have ten percent that are three or below, and twenty percent that are two or below. And we want to celebrate the fifty-one percent that are just one grade level below. So we wanted to think about like, they just, they're CSI school, but we want to think, we need to celebrate some of the good things happening there. Um, Roanoke, we have eight percent, three grade levels are below, and seventeen percent at two grade levels are below. And we'll celebrate the fifty-four percent that are just one, and twelve percent that are early on. And then, Robert Elgland, we have forty-six percent at three grade levels or below, and twenty percent at two below, and sixteen percent at one below. So we definitely need to look at that and focus really on our vocab and comprehension. And Dr. Ford, I'll be back.
I'll talk to you a little bit about our math data. So if we're looking at Jay Lou, we have twenty-five percent of our students who are two or more grade levels below. So we have sixty-four percent of those kiddos who are one grade level below. So if you're thinking that there's gonna be a lot of movement around sixty-four percent, with ten percent of our students on a grade level already. So they've already mastered that grade level standard. That's how we would read that in the year report. For Leading Creek, we have twenty-eight percent who are two or more grade levels below. And then again, that large percentage of sixty-three percent who are one grade level below, and ten percent who are already on a grade level. Um, Peterson Elementary, um, for math, we have thirty-three percent who are two or more grade levels below, fifty-eight percent who are one grade level below, and nine percent students are already on a grade level. Listen to Roanoke, we have thirty-four percent of students who are two or more grade levels below, fifty-nine percent who are just one grade level below, and six percent already on a grade level. And then our middle school, we have sixteen percent of students who are two or more grade levels below, and twenty-eight percent who are one grade below, and thirteen percent who are already on a grade level. The next chart is just the district from very seventeen are reading on math. If anything wants to add on that.
No, I just think that's a good comparison between the schools. You can kind of get an idea. When you look at that, I mean, you can kind of tell we're in the same ballpark with percent, percentage wise.
I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about our strength study of challenge. So we have met several times. We've met with I-Ready, we've met with our principals. So we think there's a strong foundational growth in our early grades. We've increased our consistency in assessment participation. We have that large portion of students, one grade level or below. And I think we're all stressing that today. That is exactly where they need to be pushed forward to be on a grade level by the end of the year. And then a big one was the overall positive approach to the implementation and the fidelity of the I-Ready program. So we saw a lot of principals come to our meeting and being willing to implement this fully into their schools and maybe reflect it as their practices in the comments.
All right, so our next steps. So we want to prioritize student comprehension and mathematical reasoning, enhance the effectiveness of tiered support and intervention fidelity through I-Ready tools and standard-based master reports, provide ongoing school-specific I-Ready training and support, ensure principals and the district curriculum team monitor implementation and instructional time effectively, facilitate productive and relevant PLCs focused on data-driven instruction tailored to individual student needs, deepen understanding through collaborative unpacking of academic standards, and align district-wide goals to promote collaboration, differentiation, high expectations in a student-centered learning environment.
Mrs. Sabatelli, um, Mrs. Bonner brought up about too much testing. Can you elaborate on that some till?
Okay, so we actually had a title meeting on last Friday. And one of the things that I brought up to her was I feel like our students are being assessed way too much. I feel like because of the assessment, of all the assessments that we're doing, they're missing out on instruction. So for instance, one of our schools spent five weeks doing this early assessment. So that five weeks, which really to me should only have been two weeks, that's three weeks of small group instruction they should have had. So right now, I am collaborating with someone from the state, and we are figuring out exactly what we have to do so that we can go from there. Because it really is not fair to our students to have all this assessment. It's too, I mean, think about what it does to us. It's not fair to them. So that is one thing I'm really working into.
So as we go forward, because we're based on academic scores, you've got the green, you've got the red, and then the yellow. You got your, your kids are gonna make it. You got your kids that's gonna struggle.
Right.
But where you're gonna move the needles, those kids in the middle, like you talked about?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And that's our approach.
Yeah.
Because there's the one, those, they're gonna, they're really gonna, because that's where the numbers are at.
Right. I mean, we're gonna focus on all the kids.
Absolutely.
Because that's what we do. But yes, those yellow kids, and especially even the bottom yellow kids, I mean, there's a lot of growth that can happen there. Yes.
Because I go back to questioning, I've talked to Dr. Stewart about this and testing. You know, we, we test all kids, and I understand that.
Right.
I question other counties if they're testing everybody. We've talked about that. I think that's something we need to talk about, but we take care of everybody.
Right.
If we're gonna be regulated by these standards, we have to have a strategy just like everybody else has.
One hundred percent.
Like you just talked about, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
How are we compared to like private schools and, and, you know, like Lewis County School?
Well, and I know that you talked to me about St. Pat's, and St. Pat's has not been a test.
Well, the reason I'm asking, I, I just want to know what their percentage was as compared to our elementary or whatever.
So that's?
Same way with the high school, Notre Dame versus?
So that's not necessarily a fair comparison? Because, um, private schools and charter schools are not required to follow the same assessment standards that we are.
That's what I was asking. Do they have to?
Some of them choose to, but it's not a requirement.
These metrics?
I need to ask this, but, but, Mrs. Sabatelli, could you go over, uh, Robert Elgland for me one more time? Just so I make sure I heard what you said.
For the reading or the math? Or both?
Uh, that, that, both, please.
Um, as far as the reading goes, they are forty-six percent three gr- three grade levels or below, and twenty percent two grade levels below. Um, sixteen percent at one below, and twelve percent at one grade level, and six percent above. And then math?
Mr. Haley, we can email this presentation to you as well.
Now, now, what about?
I'm sorry. I just thought I might have heard those numbers wrong, because I thought they were.
No, as far as math goes, they have forty-four percent three grade levels below, sixteen percent two grade levels below, twenty-eight percent one, and ten is early on, and three is above.
Now, what about the home score? Are they, are they required to take the same test?
They're not.
I, I was asked that by a couple of parents. That's why I asked them two questions.
This year's metrics compared to last year's? Has there been any comparison, any analysis to see where we're going to be?
We actually looked at that, and it was pretty close. Um, we had a couple of schools, like Roanoke was a little bit higher. Leading Creek was a little bit higher. But as far as everybody else's case, it was about the same.
Anything else? Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Stewart, we don't have any delegations, right?
There are none this evening.
Okay. Uh, moving on. Consider an approved mill agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Central West Virginia Community Action. Head start for the 2025-2026 school year. Breakfast, two dollars ninety-four cents, lunch, four dollars and seventy-one cents. So a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve a new, the new kindergarten report card for the 2025-2026 school year. Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Is, is there any main differences from the old report card? What's?
Ms. Sabatelli?
What's the difference, Ms. Sabatelli?
So there's a report card that they do, that's a state one, that's called, it's on the E-L-R-S, which is what our pre-K does. Um, and what happened, our Peterson kindergarten teachers, really, it was just very time-consuming for them to go through each one of those pages. It's very, very long. So they actually went, they asked me if they could do it, and they created this report card. And I actually sent it to someone from the state to make sure that they thought it was okay. I looked over it, and several of us looked over it to make sure that it met all the standards and all the components. It's just an easier way for them to assess without taking as much instructional time.
Hey, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the policies as provided?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda details as provided?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approve forward minutes from September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. And as well, I can do these together, correct, Dr. Stewart?
Yes.
As well as, uh, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five work session. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to finance. Consider and approve payroll payments in the amount of three million, seven thousand dollars and five hundred sixty-nine, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty cents. Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes. Do you need a, you have a question?
On personnel? Yes. It's brought up, we've done, it was brought up to me today that the school calendar posted on the website, it's not the correct option. We, the teachers and the whole staff and it, and all employees voted for option two, and they said that option one is what's up on the post.
We were made aware of that this afternoon.
That we were made aware of it?
And, and we're working to get that correct.
There's some changes, there, that would, for planning for parents and?
They're gonna make those corrections and get those out. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve monthly financial report for August twenty-twenty-five. Do you have a motion for approval? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve budget journal entries for twenty-twenty, August twenty-twenty-five. Budget journal entries, eight thousand one through eight thousand three. Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Discuss and approve annual financial statement for fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Do you have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those, those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Would you like for Ms. Richards to share information about that statement with you?
Please.
Yeah. So I just wanted to share like a brief overview of the financial statements for, uh, for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, so at the year end, uh, the board's total net position, um, was thirty-five point one million dollars, a due freeze of about four point two million from the prior year. Um, the majority of that, about ninety-five percent, um, is invested in our buildings, our buses, um, and other capital assets that serve our students every day. Um, roughly six percent is restricted for special projects, and our unrestricted balance shows a small deficit of about four hundred and seventy thousand, uh, primarily due to GASP one-on-one accounting rules, um, that now require us to recognize compensated absences differently. Um, and just to elaborate on that, the, this is talking about the net position, um, which is on the government-wide. Um, it'll be that first financial statement versus whenever I talk about fund balance, that is cash basis. Um, and so GASP one-on-one, um, since, uh, anyone in the retirement plan nine, um, that's after July first, twenty-fifteen, um, we have to account for their sick time as a liability now, um, which increased our compensated absences about four million dollars, uh, liability. So we didn't take quite a hit as a lot of counties. Um, that only made our unrestricted net position negative four hundred and seventy thousand, where a lot of counties are looking at negative mini-millions. Um, so that was kind of a hit. Uh, but we're required to report it that way. Um, our combined government fund balance, um, ended the year at five point three-seven million, um, an increase of roughly two point seventeen million. Uh, the general fund balance rose slightly to two point four-seven million, about eight percent of the expenditures, uh, which meets the state's benchmark for financial health. Um, the excess levy fund climbed to two point two-seven million, uh, thanks to the higher property tax collections this past year. Um, while our special revenue fund improved to four hundred and forty-nine thousand, um, for more timely, uh, grant drawdowns. The SRR fund closed out this year, um, so we're not gonna see that on our financial statements anymore. And the capital projects fund was established, and we ended, uh, the year with a negative four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, um, awaiting SBA reimbursement. Uh, the total revenues were forty-one point four million, and expenditures were thirty-nine point three million, uh, resulting in approximately a two million net gain in fund balance. Uh, the main revenue changes were an eight point seven million increase in property taxes, um, like I said, from the higher assessed property values, um, and a two point five million reduction in state aid, uh, which moves, um, inversely with local tax growth. Uh, federal grants declined as the pandemic-related SRR funds expired, um, and food service reimbursements dropped with lower meal participation. Um, on the expense side, instructional costs rose about seven point eight million, uh, driven by staffing benefits and one-time material purchases. Um, operations and maintenance also increased due to utilities and facility repairs. Um, our capital investments totaled about thirty-three million net with new buses, HVAC upgrades, and safe school entrances completed this year. Um, importantly, the board has no bonded debt. Um, and our only long-term obligations are compensated absences and, uh, small subscription-based leases, uh, which are GASP ninety-six. Um, looking ahead, we'll continue focusing on cash flow stability, uh, balanced budgets, and maintaining healthy reserves as federal relief funds sunset. Uh, property tax growth provides a solid foundation, but disciplined spending will remain key to staying off the financial watch list. Um, in summary, um, Lewis County schools remains financially sound, uh, with steady local support, responsible fund management, and continued investment in safe, well-maintained facilities for our students.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, one, one question.
Yes.
Uh, what about the oil and gas money from, from these, uh, deep wells? Uh, have we got any of that money yet? And if not, when?
Yeah, that's, that's in our, yeah, our property tax.
That's in, okay.
Yeah, we see, we're gonna see a lot more of that in our excess levy than we will our general fund. But yeah, we started to saw a good bit trickle in this past year, and feel pretty optimistic about this year.
So let the people know that they take away from our general fund.
Yeah. Yeah, they take away our state.
A lot of them think it all comes into us, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, they take, they take it away from the general. We get a little bit on the excess side. We don't get all, what everybody thinks we get.
No.
Not even close.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
You'll meet her for the next one.
Okay. Consider and approve the selection of Charles E. Harris CPA to audit fiscal year twenty-twenty-five financial statement. Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Richards, is there anything, anything you need to share about the auditors?
Uh, no, I tried to provide a good, uh, rating system, um, to kind of show you how I assessed them and what I was looking for in my paper. So I hope that was.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Reports and discussion, transportation, facilities, and safeties. Safety.
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to start with safety. Safety first is a great motto. Um, so if we go to the safety report, then we're looking at, uh, our portfolio wide. The panic buttons, the nine-one-one call-outs, those are all at eighty percent for the portfolio, that's six schools, uh, two other buildings. Three other buildings, actually. The fire marshal inspection came through. A lot of the inspections, uh, results were second and third violations, uh, for the past year or two. And so they are being addressed, um, without, uh, any hesitation on our part. The fire marshal typically gives someone fifteen days. I'm able to work with the fire marshal, it takes a little longer. That communication line is open, um, so we're not gonna look at any further violations or any type of code, um, enforcement regarding that. So these corrections are gonna get fixed, and this is on several buildings. The, uh, going down to the first responding, the test is complete for the Wi, uh, Wi-Fi IP address. We're just waiting on IT to help us with that. And the body cam, we have a plan B for the, the FOBs, um, for the sheriff's office in particular, to come into the buildings. Quick access, so IT's working with us, and they're really, uh, giving us a lot of support. So we'd like to wrap that up, uh, hopefully by, by November, a couple of weeks. Future look at the intrusion barricades for the classrooms. I'd like to start that, like to look at some options here. The entire premise for the safety, obviously, is for the students. And if there is an intruder, yes, we want to stop them at the door. Yes, we want to have first responders on scene. But if they do get into the building, we need a third layer, and we want to try to, uh, institute that. So I'm working on that program. Key control is also a major concern that in particular I have, um, with the teachers, revolving staff. This match locks, so we'd like to standardize that. And then master keys would be held at the transportation office in a secured location. If anyone's gonna cut keys, then there's a gateway, so to speak. They have to come through us, they have to look at logging in and security keys. That way, we're not just passing out keys and then have turnover, and we don't know who can and cannot, cannot get into the buildings. Transportation, are there any questions on safety?
For, for access, access points? Do we have proximity cards? That way, we can detail who's coming in and out of our facilities?
Yes, that's what these are.
That's what, those are? So that the, the master keys, educate me what those would, what that would be for?
Key control, key control. You, you're ex-police, right? Right, so key control, getting in, and we want to make sure that if there's turnover, such as a teacher, I need another key, I need another key. Now we're copying keys willy-nilly without going through the key box. And the locks have? And the locks have been changed. We have all kinds of different, different lock systems, so we want to standardize that. Therefore, when somebody, uh, new principal comes in, for example, new principal comes in, he has complete understanding and control of key control access within his building. That's what we're trying.
So we, we're not using proximity cards exclusively, right? We're still using hard keys?
Yes.
That, that's whenever I thought he was talking about key control, because the proxy cards, you know, we could access everything with those. I, I do, I did, so we, we have a hodgepodge of proximity cards and, and physical keys.
Physical keys for primarily the interior of the building.
Okay.
But the proximity cards get in front doors.
Okay, so all of our staff has, has those particular cards.
Like you might've, you might've got a key for your classroom. Well, they gave you a master key by mistake, so here I, I can get into cafeteria, I can get in the gym, I can get in my classroom.
I got you.
And then, of course, you don't tell anybody you have the master key.
And then we, whenever attrition runs its course.
What happens?
And somebody leaves.
That master key walks.
It does. And then proximity cards, we, we have a, a, a system, whatever that might be, where we remove their access.
Correct.
Yes, yes, and that's by a machine, yes, and also with IT to get more of the keys in my office, so I can also control then subcontractors, visitors, and whatnot that need access as well, yes.
Okay.
Right, so we're trying to, we're trying to lock it down. That's what we're trying to do. Right. Okay, any other questions about safety?
Nope.
All right, transportation. I got my teeth kicked in last couple of weeks with transportation, all right? So we had a call it a perfect storm. We knew that we had some drivers that were coming out of rotation. We knew that we were gonna run into some problems, and so the last couple of weeks, we've been preparing for that, pulling in as many subs as we possibly can, and our pool is very, very small, three to four subs. All of a sudden, we don't have any subs. We're down to one, maybe two. We're pulling in a chief mechanic. Raise your hand, John. Okay? He hasn't turned a wrench in three weeks. He's been driving. And so we just, we ran out of resources real fast. We had people getting sick. Um, there's no excuse. It's on me, and please, I invite you, any parents that have concerns, they really do need to come to me, all right? I, I can sit with them and I can explain the situation. I can listen to what they have to say, and we can do as much as we possibly can, all right? Those, those calls, please invite them to come and see me. So this is a, that was a bad week, bad couple of weeks. However, the numbers tell you the story on what we're going through for transportation. Overall, the biggest plus that we've had is in three months, our drivers' morale. This is a real number. Sixty-eight percent has grown to seventy-seven percent, has grown to ninety percent. Drivers are enjoying their job. We're coming together, we're pointed in the right direction to support the mission. So that's important to us. Driver absence, twenty-four to seventy-two. We lost a lot of drivers in absences for the month of September. October's even worse. Then we go down to OT man-hours. We are not sitting around. So we are trying to cover as many people as we can. We go from eighty man-hours in August to almost five hundred and fifty man-hours from the department in September. That's huge. We're tired, we're working, and we're getting as much done as we possibly can. The next stage, Dr. Stewart and I are working together, we're trying to get the runs solidified, condensed, and we're running out of options. We don't have an awful lot of play left. So we, we don't have any more wiggle room. Once we make these next couple of adjustments, we're, we're running tight. So we're hoping that we get some more drivers in, we're hoping to get more subs, and uh, realignment this winter. So this, we're, we're running really, really thin here. Any other questions on transportation?
Roughly, how long does it take once you get a sub to, once he gets off his classes, you know, whatever, and before he's actually driving? We're talking two weeks, three weeks, four weeks?
Once he gets, once, once he gets approved by the board, is that correct?
Yeah.
Comes in the next week, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that how it works with subs?
Y- yeah, I, I, are you asking once they apply to be a substitute, how long before they can get on the bus?
Before they can actual drive.
Then I can answer that. It just depends on their qualifications coming in and how many hours they need in training.
So it's been more or less always the way that it's been.
I'm a trainer here. I'm a certified bus instructor. Uh, somebody coming in with no experience is gonna be a minimum of ninety days. From the time they start their training until they're likely to pass the test. Now, I guess when you come to the door that has CDL already, it could be even be arrested in court, that speaks things up. But if they come out of state, they still have to do forty hours.
Right.
So if you're coming in, training in the east, it's hard to get them there.
If you've already got your CDL passed in court.
But if they don't have CDLs coming in the door, typically it'll take at least ninety days of three hours a night, three nights a week.
Worst-case scenario if they don't have nothing, correct?
No, that's, that's, that's the best-case scenario.
Well, uh, well.
You can get them there all the time.
Right.
Now, I'm just as into it with my family right now, because I think this is important, something we need to talk about. And this is one of the things we've talked about. We got slammed over about having drivers. Now, I'm a trainer, but I'm not a recruiter. I need you guys. You're my recruits. You're the ones out in public. I'm working a lot harder today at shop work, right? I need you to recruit.
I have a question on, on the morale. I see where.
Yes.
The metric shows us improving. Do we do, are we doing monthly, um, surveys, if you will, to, to show that?
Even though morale is ambiguity, okay. However, we've been able to quantify it, yes, because once a month, every, the drivers know, and we set this up, the drivers know, we all sit at the table, and they raise their hand. One to ten scale, where are you for the month? And sure, they may have had a bad night, but, but still, they're giving us a number, and then I scale it all out, and that's a percentage. So it is something that I believe is very important to share, is that these drivers are really getting along. We're doing well, and, and we're moving in the same direction. So yes, it is quantifiable. Any other questions about transportation? Okay, facilities, we start off with high school. Making some accomplishments, so that's good. Um, the reports, I go ahead and sort them as far as completed up on top. Some of the highlights then, the acoustical panels, uh, should be coming in, I would say, I believe, November. Uh, they're coming in, maybe, yeah, November, month of November. The acoustical panel's coming in, that's for the band in the auditorium. The roof repair around the courtyard, the perimeter, the black mold and whatnot. So it is, um, it's a water leak, and it's around the perimeter. The roof itself is under warranty. However, the leaks have been identified as coming from the metal that's on the side of the building, so it's not the roof. Water intrusion through the metal because the flashing wasn't done correctly, and so actually there was, there is no uh, counter-flashing on a lot of that metal. So we're trying to get proposals now to uh, take that metal off the siding of the building and then put in some appropriate counter-flashing, so therefore the, the water will not go through the CMU and create a black mold on the outside or seep into the building. So that's, that's the progress that we're making there on the water intrusion. We did find out in the high school that there is a domestic water mixing problem, so the temperatures aren't regulated, and that is very, very frustrating. It's been going on for a couple of years, I guess, uh, with the kitchen staff. They're trying to bake bread, they need cold water, they're getting hot water. Um, it's, it's a big problem. However, once identified it, then actually starting next week, we're gonna have the plumbers out there putting the check valves. It's a low-cost uh, correction, but it just needs to be done, and that way the, the cooking staff in particular can use their hot and water when they turn it on. They can expect hot and cold water. The uh, basketball boards is another problem such as the scoreboard. It's, there's a combination of, you know, should we, in the athletic field, should custodians have prepped these areas prior to game night? That way we're not being reactive. Yes, however, they're gonna need some, send them our help, and so we, we are actually getting proactive. We're trying to look at the basketball season and get everything polished up before the season actually hits. Any questions about the high school? Now, it comes to middle school. Again, we've made an awful lot of progress here with accomplishments. The fire alarm upgrade panel is the big ticket, and so, um, we have right now, I, I think I mentioned last time, I just want to quickly reiterate, the panel itself is working, but it is obsolete. We're getting an upgrade in. If that panel breaks, then we do not have fire alarm capability. And so we're getting a new panel, waiting for the parts to come in, the new system to come in. That'll be swapped out, and then we'll be clear as far as the fire alarm panel. Going to Jane Lou. Uh, again, lots of progress. The panic button is a, um, is, like I said in the safety report, that's uh, the portfolio-wide. The HVAC replacement, that's a long-term project. We have drain lines at Jane Lou. Those are the winter project that's coming out. That's why it's one-one-twenty-six as far as the completion date. We're gonna wait for the school to, you know, go through their winter break. And then the parent traffic loop is my next project for uh, Jane Lou Elementary School. Get the uh, cars off the highway, uh, off the main drag, and then get them into private property while they're waiting for their kids to load and unload. And Leading Creek, here, we have the storage shed out, out back, right over here, and then there's a ditch liner and stabilization. That's a major project. The, the ditch liner stabilization is primarily focused on the manure runoff that's coming off the hill when it rains and then getting into the playground. So that's pretty much uh, focused on the health and welfare of the children that are playing outside. So I need to work on that. It can be dredged every so often, which recently it was. However, if you look out there, you see a big pile of dirt, soil that cannot be utilized, and it was just left there, and the drain, it's still not draining. It's just getting worse. So I want to go ahead and stabilize that. I do have a plan for that. I'm getting some contractors to look at that and get the thing stabilized so it can be long-term instead of every season going out and just cleaning it up and then creating another big mess. Over at Peterson.
Sell the dirt.
I'm sorry?
Sell the dirt.
Yes.
People always want.
Right.
One, one thing.
Nutrition.
One thing, Jane Lou, the bottom parking lot there, have you?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, figured out anything on it, it?
I have a plan for that.
Okay.
I have a plan. I can come see you and show you the plan.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause I, every now and then I get asked, you know, what's the plan?
Sure, sure, yep. The, the traffic loop there, and it's gonna be beautiful when we're done. Yep, I have a plan for that. So yeah, I'd like to come see you and show you that.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. The um, uh, parent traffic loop at uh, Peterson, that is, the guys are mobilizing Monday of next week. So a week from today, they're mobilizing, and yes, we're gonna have it done by Halloween. So then, but again, when it snows, it's not gonna help anybody. However, we're gonna have that, that parent loop taken off by, by Halloween. So that'll be good. The HVAC replacement on the classrooms, we have a long-term program for that, that we're working in unison with the short-term pro- program. The HVAC, you know, ventilators for the classrooms are in our, then that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we have in contingency funds. We're gonna try to capture that and get as many of those unit ventilators up and running as possible. So I'm working with the current, uh, prime contractor, which is WSA for that project.
Speak of, speak of snow, uh, and John, you probably answered this, uh, or maybe you know, uh, the uh, we currently have, what, two plow trucks now? Snow, snow removal.
We, we have two plow trucks, yes. Are they, they, are they conditioned for and ready for this? No. They're, they're not in good condition. We're out. They're in bad shape.
Okay, now my, I recommend, Mariah, do we have money for plow trucks? Well, that's gonna be coming up quick, and when it hits, it's gonna hit, and I've already been told that there may be a salt shortage this year. And that's just something to keep in the back of your mind. Do we have money for?
We don't, I haven't looked at that.
I mean, that's just something to throw out. I mean, I know it's still a little early, but when, when the snow hits, it hits and it's relentless.
Sure.
And I know when I drove a bus down to Jane Lou School, you know, two plow trucks just don't get it. You can't be at Rowan Oak, you can't be at Leading Creek, you can't be at Jane Lou School. We need another plow truck.
That, that is correct.
Or something to, to, if, if, if we can at all.
Sure.
To, to get them, because I mean, I, I've, I've come off there personally on the bus, and Terry, you've been down there. You, you know, sometimes you take air and you just take off sideways and you just hang on, even with chains on, I mean, they're just, but. It's, it's hard to cover all the schools with two trucks, I mean.
That, that is correct. Um, we are, uh, working on a preventative plan instead of a reactive plan, yes. And so, uh, another element of that is the tractors, right now, we're getting them serviced, not only for mowing the lawns, but also for push, pushing snow. And so the custodians will have a capable vehicle at that time to support. So they won't just have to rely on two trucks to get to six schools. So we are, we are working on that right now. And that's, that's a cost. It's a significant cost with, with the condition of these tractors that we have in our fleet. Yep, it's, it's a significant cost.
Well, now, the, the only thing I see a problem with that is, if, is, you know, when, a person, a human's a human. When you're out there and it's zero degree weather and the winds are blowing and you're on that tractor, you know, that, that's, that's gonna be, unless we, are we gonna have foreseeable cabs or heaters or something for them, I mean? Cause I, I've been out there. I've done that before, and it's, it's very difficult.
It is. It, you're, there's no getting around it. We're in a bundle up. We're gonna have our hand warmers, and we're just gonna get out and, and contribute as much as we can. We do have an increase in route within the drivers. We also have a significant increase in communication and support between our office and the custodian staff. So we're getting along, we're getting to know each other, and we're understanding our expectations. We know it's gonna be tough, but we're, we're talking about it. And so that's gonna help a lot. That's gonna get us through. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Rowan Oak, um, another big hit is the uh, gym floor. So we have a twenty-five thousand dollar, um, new floor coming into the gym, and we want to do this before the uh, tables, um, get replaced for that. Uh, so that's a good one. And then, of course, uh, again, preparation for the winter time or power outages. We need to upgrade that fuel tank for the fire pump and the generator, and I'm working with, uh, Woodford Oil on that right now. With Central, asbestos abatement is done. We need to epoxy the floor. I have a work order out for that. Um, that way we can seal that floor. The panic buttons are just about done, and then the boiler. Uh, so this winter, the people, the staff members at Central Office will have heat. We're working as fast as we can to get that boiler up and running. The FRN lease space, so the roof has been repaired. I didn't know if you knew that, Dr. Stewart. The roof's been repaired, okay? And then, uh, the HVAC, uh, we did find out that their HVAC, um, as far as, uh, freezing up and whatnot, so I did get a service tech out there to look at that. Transportation facility, we are, this is, the focus is on school, but as we get subs and they get some downtime, then they come back to the transportation building and work on our buildings. However, the wash bay, uh, the heater pump, so at this year, then in this winter, the guys will have, the guys and gals, the bus drivers will have heat, the hot water, when they wash their buses. And so that will help then get the salt off the buses, cause they can stay out there longer and they're not gonna freeze, uh, putting, cleaning their buses. Then we have, uh, the floor drains, uh, they're still working on that as far as the uh, uh, septic system for the transportation office. As of right now, we still don't have heat. However, we are, um, waiting for parts to come in. I believe a lot of them are coming in from Europe, and the pumps in particular. And so I anticipate that we will have heat this winter for the mechanics and the staff. And then the bus corral, uh, we're working on that. We're bringing the shed from the bus corral, bringing it over here to Leading Creek. We're putting up a ten-foot privacy fence along, uh, the property line, uh, for the neighbors, so we're gonna be good neighbors. So we're, we're making things happen over at the transportation office. And then facilities, so this is my com- this is your comment here, uh, replace the service vehicle, so that's something that's in the future. And then, uh, they also do need a lift, uh, for the future so that they can fit into the elevators to get the mini lift up to, uh, second floor on some of these buildings. So, any other question? So any other questions for facilities, any buildings you need key in on?
Very complete.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent Up takes.
I have a couple of things. Positive, homecoming was successful, lots of activities, we appreciated the support from community for all the events and festivities. For those of you that were at the parade or in the parade, I think it rivals the Christmas parade for the town of Weston, huge amounts of folks out, so that was really nice to see. Career Day at Robert O'Bland was a huge success, I don't know if you had the opportunity to go and visit, but our kiddos enjoyed seeing different opportunities that were available to them, they were having lots of conversation with our community businesses. Some of our directors have already talked, that our principals met with iReady to dig into their data and look at their personalized instruction dashboard. Ms. Tabatelli and myself, along with the principals from Peterson, attended the CSI conference in Morgantown, so we're beginning to work through that process, the school has been asked to provide a lot of information, and today I know they were starting the process of looking at their leadership team. This past week, I presented at Leadership Lewis, and so we're in the process of setting that up to visit Lewis County High School, so they want to have one of their sessions at Lewis County High School this year, hopefully in March, so I've been working with Mrs. Lambert to try to get that in place. I know you talked earlier about sheriff deputy here, so I've started some conversations around the Guardian program and those options that exist, so I've started that with the Lewis County Sheriff's Department. Wednesday is our professional learning day, and so we have, all of our instructional staff will be working with SREB around standards and PLCs, starting to unpack those standards, and then in the afternoon, they will have their faculty senate following their lunch.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Holden?
You know, as I talked about before, maybe next meeting, Mariah, if you could do it, have us, what we do have in equipment fund to get equipment, you know, what we've got to, you know, to work with, so to speak. And like I said, you know, I know some of this equipment's old, I mean, I know a lot of them, plow trucks been there, and they're getting them, reenterating on plow trucks, they've been there since, you know, I drove a bus years ago. And the salt, I mean, absolutely, I mean, it's harder, a snowplow, it's hard, it's hard on a, on a, on a vehicle, and, but, you know, I know, I know that, there's been a lot of talk about Peterson out there, about the road going around it, I think that'll, I think, I hope that'll, that'll help out there, because, you know, but like you said, in the winter time, you know, you're kind of stuck, but there again, you know, I don't know how much, you know, traffic, if it's bad in the winter time, I mean, there'll be days we'll be off, so I'm very anxious to see how that works, but other than that, I have nothing else.
Mr. White?
I want to thank the staff here at Leading Creek for everything you've done tonight, and also thank you for all that you do, I think it's great what you do out here and you help kids, and we come out here and nice food, and we appreciate that and thank you. I'd like to welcome Mr. Haynes, good to have you, appreciate you being here, look forward to working with you in the future. Dr. Stewart mentioned the homecoming float and the parades, I was sitting there, we ran it, it's a lot of fun, I was thinking, you know, we've got a lot of talent in this community, I would love to see next year for Leading Creek to have a float, or something to be on with students and all your staff, personnel and everybody, the same way with Peterson, and let's get our people out there together. Same with our central office, you can make it competitive. It's a good time, it's a good showing of your school system, and everybody comes out for it. As we go forward, I think that's something we could build on, working with the public, seeing people back and forth, and that's what I've got to say about that, but again, thank you for everything you've done tonight, we appreciate it.
Mr. Bush?
Yeah, I'd like to also comment on homecoming. Unless you're in the parade from start to finish, I don't think people realize how many people turn out for homecoming. Saw former students, grandparents, grandkids, it was amazing, and I can't imagine how there was any candy left in Weston to throw. Isn't that right? So, but it was a fantastic parade. I would also, on a sadder note, like to send condolences to the family of Ms. Barbara Hathaway. Mrs. Hathaway was the secretary at Lewis County High School way back when I started teaching, and was there for almost thirty years, and she was a prime example of the type of secretary you wanted, she had the teacher's back, if you didn't dot this across that, she made sure that when you turned it into the office, it was right, and she was elegant, professional, and a wonderful person to work with, and I missed her when she retired, and she was a great neighbor, too.
And when she looked over her glasses at you, you better pay attention.
Yeah. She could corral a student as well as an administrator could, so condolences to her family.
Mr. Faly?
First off, I'd like to apologize for my work commended keeping me away from Leading Creek tonight, I really would have liked to have been there, you know, on that, I think I will, I will pass tonight at, and then I will save my time and promise to talk double at the next meeting. Thank you.
To start with, I want to thank Leslie White for coming up with that idea that Johnny just shared, I know he did not come up with that.
That is not true.
I'm a hundred percent sure of it.
That is not true.
No, it didn't happen. On a, on a serious note, you know, we look at these scores and, and, Ms. Moody, you mentioned teaching basic cursus, or if you sign a contract, or whatever it might be, shoot, you're going to the bank, you got to sign documents, you get by, you know, mortgage, whatever, and I know Mr. Bush is kind of in the same boat as I am on this, but literacy, reading, writing, we got to, we got to get better. And I am absolutely, I'm going to remain an advocate, that we have an elementary, at least a traveling elementary library. It starts there, that's why I had to, I had to bring up, did you go to the Gilmore County Library, did you happen to go to our Lewis Bennett Library? I think that that's, that's something that we need to pay a little bit of attention next budget year, I think that's a modest investment that, just want to pay some dividends, and I'm guilty as anybody, I'd, I'd love to have turf on the fields, I'd love to have stuff to plow snow, I'd, all of those things are very important, but in my mind, I think that that's something that, that we really need to pay a little bit more attention next year, and if we could make a little asterisk beside that and bring that up again, if we could find the person, I think it'd be, it'd be worth our time. I don't have anything else, thank you all so much, love the school out here, it's, it's amazing, you're not forgotten, I know you're thinking, oh goodness, Brian, and I did say no, no, and you are, but you're not forgotten, I love it, absolutely love it out here. Next meeting will be October twenty-seventh at Peterson Central. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Samo.
I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a good evening.